I call this meeting to order at 7:05. So, welcome everybody to the, what are we, an April meeting? Almost, almost May? So, starting off, before we get to approving minutes, I just want to recognize a couple of things that are going on, mainly around trustees and renewals. Dana has decided not to rerun, right? So, certainly want to recognize it's been an incredible 21 years. Yes, so, pretty amazing, but I don't, was that 20?
You were a big part of it, you were in it.
Eleven. So, 21 years, I mean, there's nothing I can say to express how much work she's done for the library. I know she's always committed to, I think, everything library, the patrons, you know, talking to people and trying to understand what they're doing with the library and how they're using it. Obviously, the staff, you've been committed in various ways to the staff and staff appreciation. I know you used to drive a lot of the staff appreciation parties back years ago. So, and I know you're always kind of talking to the staffs, that's great.
Yeah, what's a great library?
The Friends, you know, you've been kind of on both sides of the Friends throughout the years. And then more recently, I guess the last, what, five or six years, the Capitol Campaign, which is really outside the responsibilities of the Board, but still a tremendous commitment to the, uh, the library and fundraising for the library.
Yeah, it's like 2016 is when we got the, um...
Then we got the 501C.
The 501C.
Dana, you got it. Dana, you, you created the Capitol Campaign and then you recruited, um, you know, Doug and myself and other, you know, folks to be on it. So, you, it's all, it was all you, you picked up from Mr. Poller.
Thank you, yeah, it's been great. I really wanted to get involved, so I did.
Yeah.
But I figure it's now for new people and new blood. And, um, so it's been great. And I do, I mean, and Carrie was with me for the ride and, um, what was the year when we didn't get?
Yeah, what year was that?
It was two years, it was 1997.
It's been since I started.
It was 2011.
Twenty, I was gonna say 2011, yeah, 2011. Yep, and, but we ended up with an even better library, you know, so.
It took a long time, but it was well worth it. Thank you, thank everybody.
We will definitely find a way to help you celebrate, um, in one way or another, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. We'll miss you on the Board.
Well, thanks. Thanks, I think the library's in a really good place. It's really exciting, I really do. I think Tom is a wonderful addition and he's really leading well and the staff.
We have an amazing staff.
And it's, I mean, I'm, I'm really just astonished in the number of programs we've had too. And that 3,000 attendees in five month, in like four months. That's really great, so we're really doing, we're doing our mission, I believe. So, it's really exciting, so, I thank everybody, it's been great. It's time for me to move on.
And we certainly hope that you will continue to support the library activities in other ways.
Yeah, I'll get involved with the Friends if I can. I have in the past, so. And we still have the campaign and that, we're here for forever, that was the whole idea, so nobody else, so we don't have to start anew. So, that's all it's gonna be going.
Yeah, I think you, that is.
I mean, it's obviously, we're not in campaign mode, but we're here to help.
Great, well, thanks. Another change is that, um, John, which is here, um, he's, I guess he's decided not to rerun. Um, so he's been with us for three years and, you know, the one thing about John, I would say, is he jumped in like right away and started participating in various, um, aspects of the, of the Board. Um, he did like the walkabouts, I know he did a lot of those reports.
The Policy Subcommittee.
The Policy Subcommittee.
We'll miss him on, on the Subcommittee, uh, which also lends itself to, you know, pitch for the Subcommittee. We'll probably need another trustee on, on the, on the Committee as well.
And I enjoyed working with him last year on the staff appreciation and we, you know, did, you know, some of those, um, you know.
I think he helped the Boy Scouts help with gardening.
Yeah.
Pretty sure.
And I know he's obviously, um, been contributing as Vice Chair for, I think, at least, at least two years. And taken over his chair when, when the chair couldn't come, so, I'd like to thank John. So, I know we have one person who's pulled papers, that's running for trustee, um, but then we will actually have an open seat. So, I would encourage you to talk to your friends and the community and you guys can talk to patrons, just let them know that there's an open seat. I don't, I don't know really what the options are, I mean, they can always do a write-in ballot, um, for the upcoming election. If it's not at that election, then they would come in as a, like a, I can't remember what they, what they call it, but like the interim.
So, we would have 30 days to appoint somebody, otherwise, the Select Board would appoint somebody. If we hadn't found somebody. But generally, the way that works is, um, you know, we would socialize someone we like for the, the Board and then we make the recommendation to the, to the Select Board.
So, I have a question, so if we, so we have two open seats and we have one of our candidates in the audience today, so thank you. So, um, but if, if you have like one write-in, you know, for the other seat, does that person get it? Like, do you, do you have to have a certain number?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
One vote?
What?
One vote, one person.
Yeah.
So, be careful who you're writing down.
Yeah, and well, I mean, it's, it's important for us then, obviously, as a Board and as a community to, to try to get someone, if they're interested, to
Yes.
kind of get a write-in campaign going, so.
Yes, um, and, uh, I believe the League of Women Voters has asked if, um, you know, we had anybody in mind who we'd like them to support as well.
Yeah, okay.
You know.
Well, I think they were looking for, like, it was Meet the Candidates Night last Sunday, so they were looking to have somebody participate, but I don't think, I don't think anybody did. You know, for that other seat.
It's happened in the past, so we had people appointed.
Yep.
And we went before the Board of Selectmen, so it does work.
But that was, that was after somebody's...
That's after the elections. Like, no, that position was not filled by the election.
Yep.
So, there were no write-ins, there was, or someone retired, someone left midterm.
Oh, okay.
Stepped down midterm.
Wasn't at the election time.
Like, I don't remember us ever having an open seat.
I don't either.
On the ballot, you know, we've always had somebody on the ballot, so that's why I'm not clear on what.
When are the actual elections?
It's...
Is it the week before town meeting or the week after town?
It's after, it's the week, the week after, because it, because you want, like, you need the incumbents to present the budget and, you know, explain what happened and everything, so, yes, the week after.
So, we have, we have like three, you have like three weeks until the elections.
So, I'd encourage people to think about, you know, as, um, and Doug, certainly he was the Chair, think about what kind of skills, you know, we want to fill, um, that we're sorely lacking.
We want, we want another Dana. We want Dana this day.
So.
And that would also go for you, Tom, right, if you see any skills that either the current Board's lacking or that we need to bring in somebody with certain set.
Yeah, I mean, I was socialized from the previous Director as well. And a lot of people just need to be asked or talked to. Um, I didn't even know what a Library Trustee was and here I am, you know, 10 years now.
10 years, yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Um, if there were no other comments on that, then we'll just move on to the agenda. So, the first item is to approve the March 26th, uh, Meeting Minutes.
I make a motion to approve the March 26th, 2025 Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? We're missing Roger.
Thank you, Kim, you always do such a wonderful job.
They are very thorough.
I can have one question on it, but I'd have to find it. It was just about, um, it was about the, um, policy, a policy, and they said it had to be approved by the State, but I didn't know if you meant the legal. But let me see if I, I'll get it.
I thought, I was gonna say, I thought we mostly tabled the policies last year, last month.
Let me see what it was.
Uh, we did.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Let me see.
It just says the note that the State is currently reviewing the remote meeting policy.
The State, that's what it, and it was the State?
Yes, for the remote meeting policy.
The Mass Board of Library Commissioners, is that what they met?
Um, no, uh, the Governor.
Oh, really, okay, that's why I didn't understand it.
Yeah.
I just didn't understand.
It literally was the State doing it and it was, it was signed into, it was renewed by Governor Healy.
It was, okay, I couldn't remember, I remember seeing the announcement.
So, that Governor Healy actually looked at our, at our stuff?
No, not our policy. This is the, this is the remote meeting, like if we were gonna have this by Zoom, like the monthly meeting, it's for all government.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I didn't understand that, okay.
All right, um, without any other, if there are no other questions, um, all in favor?
Aye.
I declare the motion carried. Um, next up are the four warrants, there's currently, current warrants 40, 41, 42, 43. So, entertain a motion either to accept them as a group or we can go through them individually.
I make a motion to accept, uh, warrants 40, uh, in the amount of 6,231, 49. Warrant 41, 3,00684, 98. Warrant 42, 9,216, 51. And warrant 43, 9,463, 81 in, um, in a group.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, any questions on the warrants? Yeah, I did not. All right, hearing none, um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, I declare the motion carried. Um, ongoing business, um, they're not, I know there's not a lot of updates, but go through the list, uh, first is the HVAC.
Always fun to talk about.
Yes.
So, there is a little update for that and it's, it's in my Director's Report as well, so I think all of you have seen that, but in a nutshell, um, working with Renad to try to determine what has been going on with the compressors because they, they seem to be malfunctioning. Um, we had a representative from LG, the maker of the unit, units, and he came and downloaded some data from the, that's one of the nice things about this all being a computerized system, is that they were able to download data, um, and review that and he presented his findings to Renad, which passed it on to me, um, as it says, um, there were some suggestions as to what we could do, such as having the, um, fans on in the historic reading room was one.
But just in the winter and have them off in the summer.
Right, right, which honestly, I wasn't doing because, um, I was thinking of them as fans as opposed to elements to keep heat down, which makes perfect sense as soon as he said it. Uh, so, that, uh, that we have been doing and, um, it's, you know, it's not an element, it's not something that's gonna fix the situation, but it certainly has improved it. The, uh, there is one compressor unit that we're waiting for, which will be installed. And so, as soon as that is in, actually, they, they had shipped it and they had shipped the wrong one. It had the wrong board on it, it was the right compressor, but the wrong board attached to it, so they needed to wait for that. As soon as that's in, uh, we're gonna be, uh, scheduling a time to have that installed and and we should be up to, to proper temperatures for the, for the rooms.
So, in your Director's Report, which is very detailed, thank you, um, so, um, so you talked about, um, we had, we had surmise in not being experts, um, in HVAC, but we thought that maybe the installed wall units in the historic reading room might not be sufficient. It sounds like Renad had, or LG, I'm not sure which one, kind of, or did LG kind of confirm that?
The representative from LG was saying that those may not be sufficient for the size of, of the, of the room.
Okay, and then they also said we don't have insulation in the attic too, so, so it sounds like there's a, a lot that we need to consider in there.
Yes, and, um, um, the, I think it was Renad, it may have been another contractor that, that was working on something else, recently went into the attic section of the historic reading room and, uh, and realized that there, there is no insulation in there at all, um, and...
And there's space to put insulation.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Fantastic.
So, I, I think that would go a long way.
Yeah.
You know, I think that, I think, if I, the wall units, um, it seems that they, they just run a lot, they run almost continuously and so they, they are just overwhelmed by that. But the reason they're running continuously is because the, the heat is, is being pushed out and it's just escaping. So, um, again, with the fans and then I think putting in, uh, I think, I think the first thing that I would look to would be putting in insulation.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a barn, if it doesn't have insulation, that room's just a barn.
Yeah.
Does, um, does anyone know, does Mass Save do commercial buildings or is that only residential program?
I don't know offhand.
You know, Mass Save is, uh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And we're not, I mean, we're not commercial either, so.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, there could be some funding available, um, to do, to, or something like this.
Can you confirm, did they, did LG make a comment on the sizing of the system? Did they think that the system was sized correctly? For, for the building as a whole?
For the building as a whole, I, I believe, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, particularly the newer section, I think that they were, they were fine with that. Again, I think the units are, are good, I think, the compress, sorry, the compressors, so, I'm, I'm doing this because they're on the roof.
Yeah.
So, the compressors are, I think, are not necessarily the problem. I think it's the, the, um, wall units that are the, the concern, that those are not of a, of a sufficient size to, um, to heat the room.
Is that the historical reading room you're talking about? Even if we got installation, we probably need new, new, more units.
And again, you know, one of the, the unit that we're waiting for now is not for there, it's actually for the, uh, Community Room and Children's Programming Room. And that, uh, Renad just thinks that's sort of a, that was just sort of a fluke. Not a, it shouldn't be an ongoing issue.
Yeah.
That one just needs to be replaced and then we should just be good. The historic reading room is the, is the area that really needs more detailed addressing.
Yeah, it'll be a little hard, since it's getting warmer, to know if this stuff works, but, um, at least we'll be prepared for the next season.
Right.
Does that include like the teen, the teen office room?
So, it does, because, so the, the teen area is directly below the, um, the historic reading room. And, um, if you're in the teen room, it, it is noticeably different if you are in the section that is beneath that, which is controlled by that, those units, as opposed to going out into another part of, even of the same, of the teen room, and it feels warmer.
So, what, what used to be the stage in the children's room, which is now that Maker Space, probably?
Right, that's the Maker Space.
Yeah, yeah.
And we still have to deal with the teen office, that's a whole separate issue.
Right, and that again is, is a, is a design flaw, I mean, that, they didn't put the out, uh, vent.
Is that something they're gonna help us with, LG and our, and Renad?
Yes, yes, um, we've been focusing on
Right.
on the compressor units, rather, for the time being.
Did the, did the little space heater, I mean, did that
Definitely helped.
quell her, like, quell the suffering of, of the temperature in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's helped, uh, helped as well in the children's room. While the unit that controls that area has been out, the children's programming room, we've been using in there as well because, um, that room gets pretty cold.
Okay. Any other questions for Tom on the HVAC?
No, I just had a question about the teen room, but he's probably gonna talk about that.
What's next?
Although it says teen office, but I think...
It says teen office.
But I'm, I'm using it as a, as a sort of generalized term, yeah, general, a teen area.
Okay, um, so, I, I saw your update about the, um, HVAC, you know, uh, keeping the fans off to keep the heat up, up top, right? But do you know if those units also do cooling, I mean, they should, the one in the historic reading room?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're both.
All right, very good, that's all.
Is it cool enough in the summer?
It's a lot easier to keep the place cool than to keep it warm, yes, yeah.
Insulation would help both, you know.
Insulation would help both.
And then, and then you mentioned too, that the windows too, I don't know whether historic windows, like, what, how, what we can do about the leaks on that, but.
That's a hard one because we have that, we got, um, because we got grants.
Right, right, so.
But if we can...
Working with those is tricky. I would, I would love to have somebody who knows much more about historic architecture than I do, have a look at those, because, um, it's, for me, it's hard to assess whether it's, it's really, whether the window's really an issue or not, because initially I thought they were, because you look at them and you see sunlight and so it sure seems like there's about an inch and a half that is just letting cold air in. But on the other side, I believe they're actually covered.
Like the storm, storm windows.
There's a storm on it, right, so I don't think it's as bad as it initially seems. I don't know, I just don't know whether that's contributing to it as much as something like lack of insulation is. I think that, I think that's really the, where the issue is.
You know who might be able to help you with that if you wanted maybe to consider it? Would be the architect that helped us with the, that did the, um, cupola, King?
Right, yeah, I mean, there's David King and then the, and then the architect who did the renovation.
And David King knows the building well, but he might, if he doesn't do it, I mean, he might know somebody that looks at windows, at antique windows. He's a very knowledgeable guy, as you know.
Okay. And while we're on the teen room, um, any update on the flooring?
Yes, uh, actually, even beyond what I was able to sell, tell you on Monday, which is that I've got in touch with the, um, installer and he's coming tomorrow to take a look at the teen room. And so, I, I've spoken to Debbie about it and she said she's free, we're gonna get him in there and, um, he's, he was pretty sure he could make it tomorrow, if not, then sometime early next week. And we're gonna go in, he, he has done installations here in this building of carpet, um, but, uh, he also does vinyl and, uh, linoleum, you know, so other types of, um, of floor covering, because we don't want carpet.
We, we do not.
We want something that you can just mop it down, because, you know, it, it's unfair to the teens to, you know.
And, and for the staff too, you know.
And the staff, right, so all around, I think we, we are better served by having that room, um, washable.
Mm-hmm.
That's fantastic.
Yep, so he, he'll, he'll be there very soon and then we will have an idea as to, um, what he suggests as well, and, and, and I'll be able to bring next month, uh, some sort of proposal for that.
Sounds great. Any other questions for Tom on the teen area?
It's still, it's still been okay with that side door with, um, because we had that tremendous, we had, we had a lot of, did we have a lot of rain last week?
There have been, since the last time we met, we have had a fair amount of rain.
Yeah.
Um, we have procedures in place that are taking care of it. Uh, I know, I've heard, heard from William that they are still working on, on getting the people in to do the gutters.
But then the bottom of the door too?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, I think a lot of that is, is just accumulation and it's looking for a runoff and it, it flows into there.
Yeah, I think you want to fix that problem before you even fix the door, I mean, the door can be done after that.
Right, right.
The two of them should help.
Yep.
Yeah, I was in that area when, at, when it had snowed a lot and it was melting and it was incredible. There was like about four to four, five inches of water right there.
Yeah.
Outside.
Yeah, outside, outside, right, just sitting.
And inside, I mean, if you, if you touch the carpet by the door after heavy rains, it, you know, it'll feel like, it'll feel damp. So, um, but we do have, uh, those like snake type things, yeah, and we have, um, fans that are running there when, when it's particularly bad.
Great. All right, um, then the next item is the Budget and Finance update.
There really isn't an update.
Oh, sorry, there really isn't an update on this because we're waiting for the town meeting now.
Okay.
So, um, I think I presented last time that I had gone to the FinCom meeting, the Finance Committee meeting
Yep.
and presented the town budget, or, sorry, presented the library budget, um, and, uh, and now we're just waiting to hear about that.
Okay.
And they approved it. Finance Committee approved it.
I don't, I don't, are they at that point yet?
I, I thought I still had to go through the town meeting before it was officially approved.
Yeah, but it, but they usually...
Oh, well, the Finance Committee was, was comfortable with it and moving it forward, yes.
That's really right.
That would just be, yeah, they'll say, you know, yeah, if they have an issue with it.
That's good.
Right.
That is excellent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but you probably already know this, but you need to be prepared to answer any questions at town meeting because they could, I mean, often there's not, but you just never know.
Yep.
Yep. And many of us will be there as well.
Okay, okay.
Okay, um, what about, um, current spending on the current budget? Are we on track where we should be at this time of the fiscal year?
We are doing very well, actually, actually, in my Director's Report, I, I wasn't sure whether I was gonna put in these numbers or put in the numbers for the current material spending
Yep.
and decide on these, just because we're still working towards the other.
Yep.
We are, we are, we are in a very positive place, uh, and so, um, I believe that we are at about 93% spent, which sounds like, oh my gosh, we're all spent. But 7% of $170,000 is still a fair amount of money to spend. So, we still have a little work to do, uh, we still have orders that are being placed and, um, and, uh, we're, we're certainly going to meet our requirement for 15%.
Great.
Excellent.
And I did confirm that, um, Eileen had updated the numbers because the numbers from the original budget were for the 13%, but the numbers that she's working with are for the 15%, so we don't end up 2% short.
Yeah, thank you, that's a huge relief.
Yeah, so I'm completely confident that we are going to hit our goal.
Great.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations, because that's no small feat.
It's a big one, yeah.
It's good.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yep.
It's, there's, there's always that element, oh my gosh, we're spending too much, oh my gosh, we're not spending enough and going back and forth, sometimes minute to minute and wondering. It's hard to keep track of because of the way that the orders are placed, so an order can be placed, but that doesn't mean we're getting everything, so we can do a thousand dollar book order, but if $300 of it goes on back order and we're not gonna be getting it until August, it doesn't help us, so, um, my staff has been fabulous with that. So, the selectors and getting their orders in, doing a great job, um, Allison and tech support and Eileen and, and the admin office, wonderful, so.
Great.
What was I gonna say, oh, can you remind us where the monies are coming from for the Renad bills? Is that still coming out of the LEED certification money, I believe, yeah, okay. Yeah, so that was the leftover monies from, or not leftovers, it was the LEED's monies from the original project.
Because it was, I mean, the, the thinking was that it, it's still part of the project.
Yep, correct.
And I would think even, like, if we can't get, like, it would be awesome if we could get Mass Save for the insulation, but if we can't, we could always use LEED's money for that too.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's...
Perfect piece.
And the windows too.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Tom on the budget or finances? If none, uh, we'll move on to the Friends update with Carrie.
Yeah, so the Friends, so, um, so, yeah, so the Friends had the annual egg hunt on April 12th and we woke up to snow. And, um, so I wanted to say thank you to Tom and to Doug, um, you know, and, you know, and Aaron, you participated, so, but, um, thank you for, you know, answering the call and coming in and, um, and you were just so appreciative that we were able to have the event and of course, you know, the, um, all the staff, you know, were terrific with all the activities inside the library. Um, so it was really a wonderful event. So, this year, um, there were three hunts, which is a little bit different than what's been done in the past and it, it worked out really nicely. Um, the first hunt at 10:00 was the sensory friendly one, so it was small and quiet and lovely. It was just really, really nice and the families really appreciated, um, you know, that, that event. Then at 10:45, we had the loud and crazy one, um, with, you know, lots of, you know, families and children participating and then we did, um, the third one was at 11:15. We're so, um, appreciative to the Grafton Police Department for providing our crossing guard, um, that was wonderful. So, we, you know, as a police officer, um, you know, who, who did that for us and, uh, uh, our representative, our Massachusetts State Representative, David Meridian, acted again, once again, as our master ceremonies. He always does a fantastic job. Um, we had local businesses supporting, um, you stop and shop, Wegmans, um, you know, so really, um... Um, you know, so really, um, you know, appreciative for, for that as well. Um, and uh, the proceeds, you know, benefit the library, which is wonderful, but it's also just a great community event. So um, so you know, thank you to everybody. The, we had um, the National Honor Society students, you know, um, participate. We had the Boy Scout troops and Erin, you know, again, as well in uh, you know, helping out too. So that was wonderful. So thank you. Um, so upcoming events for the friends.
Sorry, while you're on the Easter egg, I would just add that it was a bit of a crazy morning, right, with the snow and figuring out? So I would just recognize, you know, Tom, the staff who had to not only get ready for the Easter egg hunt, but actually get into the library and get time, get time to do that.
Yeah, and I neglected to mention, and this was the, really the start too, is the DPW, you know, clear, who cleared the way, you know, and you, you got the roads cleared and, and got the parking lot and the pathways cleared. Um, and the DPW always does support us with um, the um, like the, the cones and things, um, like in the, the barricades, so. Um, but this was, you know, they went above and beyond, so yeah.
Our maintenance crew as well.
Right, the shoveler, the two guys shoveling.
Well, I saw, I saw somebody else shoveling out there.
A little, but they were doing most of it, so those were the.
Maintenance crew, they came over and, and uh, and Joe and Tom.
Oh, great.
And they were, uh, they each tackled the side of the building to make sure that they were cleared. So they did a fantastic job.
That's wonderful. That's, I was in, yeah, I was on the other side, so that's great.
Yep, yep.
Great.
Wonderful, okay.
And the activities, I mean, the activities in our, in our children's room were just wonderful. Uh, and in the community room run by the children's.
Yeah, so in the children's room, there were the story hours, which are um, your, uh, our children's librarian, you know, was doing them. I think like every fifteen minutes, they were doing stories, um, which was wonderful. And then in the community room, the craft activities, which is, which is great. So yeah, so it was wonderful. So um, so this weekend, um, so the, the friends have been um, accepting donations of books. Um, and you know, other, you know, material, you know, DVDs, CDs, um, puzzles, games, that kind of thing. Um, they do, it's always the first Friday of the month and then that next Saturday. So um, so it's this coming weekend, so it's uh, the, the first Friday is May second. So then it's the Friday the second and Saturday the third during normal library hours. In addition, uh, this weekend, there's a, a community-wide yard sale. Um, so there's also gonna be um, sales of books at the yard sale as well. So they're gonna have a table. Um, and there's a, a map. I don't know exactly where our spot is, but there's a map too, so. Um, so we have that coming up as well, so.
Can I ask you about that?
Sure, yeah, of course.
Um, cause I saw a, a, a listing of, of where yard sale is taking place and the, and the friends are on there. Is it taking place outside the library?
Yes, is my understanding, but if it rains, um, then the thought is if it rains, that it might be in the friends' corner.
Okay.
So if that's okay.
It, it is, except that it lists that the hours are eight thirty to.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So since the library doesn't open until nine.
Yeah.
The, I mean, the staff will not be prepared to have the, the library open until nine. So.
I think that's.
They could let friends in to move things outside. I think that's fine. But um, if there's another snowstorm, um, and they need to, and they need to move it inside. It's gonna need to be held off until nine.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So um, I'm not really running the yard sale part, so I'm kind of sharing the information. Um, I, I'm gonna help out wherever I need either at the yard sale or at the collection of the books. I think I'll probably be doing the book collections because you have to move stuff around, but um.
Our team person, Debbie, was gonna reach out to Mary Ann.
Perfect.
To find out about this as well, but I just didn't know if you had an update or.
Yeah, I just, I saw an email today, um, because there's, there's a bunch of emails going back and forth and I know they said like, what if it rains, they can, we should have it, so yeah.
Yep, okay.
So that's good. Um, and, and then I guess the third thing was, um, you know, we talked about the table and the friends, um, the friends confirmed that they would like the skinnier rectangle table and, um, and very appreciative that the Capitol Campaign is willing to, you know, to, to pay for that. So um, so thank you to the Capitol Campaign. And um, yeah, so I, I think that's about it for now, so thank you.
Great. Well, thanks for the update, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Um, next on the agenda is the walkabout. Um, I guess since Chris and John are not here, they didn't pass that off to anybody? Okay, so we will pass that over today and we'll get to it next month. Um, next on the agenda is new business strategic plan with Erin. Do we have an update on anything since last meeting?
Yeah, not much since last meeting. Um, but the, the feedback that I got from, you know, the board was that it'd be nicer to have somebody local and, and the cost was a bit higher um, than we were anticipating, which I agree. So I didn't get a ton of feedback from the trustee group on, on generally who they use. But I think um, if we don't really have to, don't necessarily have to look at strategic plans, I mean, it'd be nice to have somebody who has library experience. But certainly um, you know, um, just guiding uh, you know, an organization such as the Grafton Public Library or um, you know, a, any uh, town or government organization on, you know, creating a strategic plan. So maybe to cast a wider net is what I'm saying. So hopefully um, you know, I'll have a better update on the next meeting.
Mm-hmm, sounds good. Do we have any like timelines, target timelines that we need to be shooting for as far as kicking it off?
I think only, only if we um, wanna start um, applying for grants.
Yeah, okay.
Which at this point, we don't have any that we think we're gonna apply for. I wonder if Mass Board of Library Commissioners might have anybody.
Yeah.
Might suggest.
They have some new leadership, so that would be a good, um, certainly a good avenue to check out.
Yeah, cause I was thinking, when we think about it, I mean, we have our lib, you know, we have our big, we have the library now and we have our big, our resource. So a plan's important, but that was, we've got that.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just thinking that, you know, I don't, you know, I think it, it's good to see if we can get something that's not as expensive.
Hmm, yeah.
Or, you know.
Can we um, can we dig up the previous strategic plan and just circulate it with the group? Just remind everybody what the previous plan looked like?
Yep, it's right there on the main page.
Is it still on?
It's on our trustees' page, actually.
Okay.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, so I would encourage everyone to.
Okay.
Take a peek at that, get an idea of what the previous one was and.
Yep, I will send out that to the whole group.
Great. It's gonna be a quick meeting. Exciting.
We'll make it for last time.
Yeah, make it hard, exactly. Uh, any other questions uh, or discussion around the strategic plan? Planning for the strategic, strategic plan?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, Erin, you're next too with the policy update. Anything from the policy committee?
Yeah, we've um, you know, we're, we're sad to have uh, uh, John, um, you know, not be part of the policy committee, but hopefully we can uh, get somebody to fill his, his spate, his, his spot. Because we're really uh, hitting the ground running, having um, you know, Mary Mertland um, uh, join us has been really great. Especially some of the policies that we've been covering because um, she's really uses them. Um, or, you know, um, is very familiar with them. And I'll, I'll elaborate in just a minute. But um, uh, so I know we haven't approved any policy on this board for a while because um, we were short on committee members for a while. Um, but also uh, try, try to streamline how to get, how to get them approved and, and looked, looked over by legal, right? So um, we didn't have too, too many to give to legal and based on um, you know, being effective with, with their time and the, the, the money associated with having legal take a look at it. The town wants to batch them together and we feel that, that's a good idea. So they have the epidemic policy. Um, but another policy that we looked at is uh, the volunteer policy, which um, Mary heads up the uh, the volunteer at the library, uh, which was really great. So she and um, and Tom uh, really took that um, outside the, the policy committee time and really worked it to a point where uh, we just had some minor updates um, so that we could um, really get it done and, and ready to move on to the next step right during that meeting. So really, really efficient. Um, so that's working really, really well. You know, I think one of the, the major highlights of that particular policy was, we really didn't, we really didn't talk about how um, you know, we give preference to people who need service hours, such as like the um, um, the National Honor Society. You know, but then I, I don't think there was much more to it than that. Except that we feel that if there is an influx of volunteers, which there is from time to time, we wanna make sure that Grafton residents get um, a proper shot before. You know, we just uh, have it, have it free for all, uh, because it is open to, to anybody who'd like to volunteer. So uh, just some, some quick language around that. Um, you know, for accessibility, we decided to remove Roman, Roman numerals, right? And certainly if um, you know, uh, we're including the appeals process at the end of all of our um, policies as well, right? So if someone feels that um, they'd like to challenge something, uh, they, they need to follow the proper channels. So we've noted that. And we're gonna continue to do that. So then we also looked at the material selection policy, which was um, like a thirteen-page um, document that I think was it went from a one-page document to a thirteen-page document. So um, I believe that uh, Tom and Mary also worked on this one as well, uh, to shorten it down. I don't know how many pages, but certainly um, uh, we got to a point where we're also ready to send that to legal as well. And the board felt that was ready to go too. So we should have three policies that, and hopefully that's enough for them to work on. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Um, the only other thing that uh, came up and because we had such a, a gap with the policy committee, um, was that um, w- we approved the fine free policy. And it had been so long since uh, we had approved it, uh, I realized it never made it to the website. So I, I don't know if that's been added to the we, website since we last met. Do you happen to know?
No, I don't think it has.
Okay, so that's an action item uh, for, for our, our group, uh, to make sure that, you know, once it gets approved. You know, the final step is put on the website.
What, and what is the process for doing that?
The fine free policy, yeah.
Is that just notifying Tom?
Yeah, I think so.
I didn't know if there was like a webmaster or.
No, I, I think Tom would either do it or he designates someone.
Makes sense.
Yep. So, yeah, making good progress. Um, so certainly I'll continue to, to chair the policy committee. And I have Tom and, and Mary with me, but another um, trustee would be great. Maybe um, we can socialize that after um, elections. Uh, our next meeting is the seventh, uh, of May. So I believe John will still be uh, on the policy committee at that point.
Yep, okay. Great, well, thanks to you and the rest of the committee members for going through those. I mean, that's a, certainly an important um, task for the trustees to review with the library director and library staff. The somewhat related.
Yep.
But more for Tom would be the volunteer. Do we, um, do you, are you still tracking like volunteer hours?
Oh, yeah.
And can that get, maybe could that get put in your director's report?
Sure.
If not every month, you know, every, every other month? That would be great to see. Any questions for Erin on the policies?
Just thank you.
No, thanks, a lot of work.
Yeah.
That's really important. Hopefully we'll get some approved very soon.
Yep.
It's a long.
Did the legal, I know they wanted you to package a couple together. Did they give you any idea on what their turnaround time would be?
You know, it's not me specifically. Um, so Tom interfaces with the town and the town interfaces with legal, right? So there's several layers before it gets to me. I'm not sure if.
I didn't know if it's a couple weeks or a couple months?
I, I got that impression that it was, it was a pretty quick process once they were sent.
Yep.
But the idea of sending, I mean, if you send like the volunteer policy, which is a page.
Right, sure.
They're gonna bill you for, you know, there's, I mean, there's a minimum. And so it's, it's to our benefit to.
I see.
You know, uh, you know, the, the, the collection development policy, which is now about six pages.
Yep.
Thirteen. Um, so um, I don't think that, I don't think the holdup is necessarily with legal because I know with other issues that I've worked with the town on with their legal, uh, contact, their representative. They're very quick, very quick and efficient. It's just uh, the town is, is certainly looking to get the best.
Sure.
Return.
Reduce the cost.
For what they're paying up.
Okay, thank you for that. So then next up, if there are no other questions on the policy update or policies, um, next update is from Tom and the director's report.
Yeah. All right, so uh, a couple things I've gone over already, but we can touch on a few of the others. So one is some circulation numbers just for the start of twenty twenty-five. So between January first and where we are right now, or as of Monday, um, we're doing very well. So our numbers are really, are really doing better than I had anticipated. So um, it was very encouraging um, to see that the total circulation is way up. And you know, total circulation has so much to do with the children's room being back open as well because that's where you have, you know, people come in and take out a dozen books instead of just, I'm gonna pick up my hold, you know, which we adults do. So the uh, the children are, are great users for us, so that certainly drives things up. Again, new patrons, wonderful to see. Um, I also included new, uh, recently added items because um, this time of year, as we're trying to spend out the materials budget, um, we are, we are adding a lot to our collection. So our collection is, is really growing. Trying some different formats. We're, we're including, uh, introducing a lot of new things to the Library of Things collection, which our patrons are really responding to. So that's, that's really great to see. Continuously challenging people's ideas of what a library is. So they come in thinking, eh, you know, the old, old building with the books in it. And they walk out with a rake, you know, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's nice to see.
May I um, may I interrupt for a moment?
Of course.
What do you think is driving uh, the new patrons? Do you think that there's uh, it's just a fluke? Or is it um, you know, efforts by the staff or a lot of word of mouth? Maybe people really loving what they're seeing at the library and talking to their friends? Any thoughts?
Um, I don't think it's a fluke because it's consistent and I've been seeing this, you know, for, for quite a while now. And so um, I think the consistency is enough for us to say it's just a, a common occurrence. Um, and I do, I think it's, I think it's word of mouth. I think it's, I think it's that stop and shop marketing where, you know, people are having great experiences in the library and when they're chatting with their friends, you know, if the library comes up, the, the talk isn't, oh, the children's room will never be open again. The talk now is, oh my God, did you see what, you can take belly dancing at the library. And so I think it's been um, great programming and really innovative programming. And um, and challenging people's uh, and uh, expectations of what the library is providing. And I think that uh, that we're seeing the benefit to that.
I, I'll let you certainly continue, but, but um, more surrounding teen use of the library, which is not something that we really um, had any, I don't know, insight into, I guess, because there was really never a teen space at, at the, at the older, older library. Um, and then we had an influx of teens after the pandemic and um, it got a little out of hand.
Right, as I've heard, yes.
But you know, how, how, how does that look um, as in comparison to having no, no numbers and then overwhelming numbers and?
Yep. I think that, that it's on a happy medium. So um, the, the teen room is thriving.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, if you're, if you're ever in the area after two o'clock, um, before two o'clock, it's, it's a great time for the librarians to be getting, you know, orders in and shelving and doing weeding. From about two-ten on, place starts filling up. And um, it's, it's amazing. I, I'm really encouraged by it because um, you know, when I was a teenager, I wasn't hanging out at the library. Um, and these, these teens are choosing to. And so I really think that it is the uh, the environment that has been created there. I've got some great staff there and uh, they, they really respond to them. And um, so I'm, I'm really thrilled with what we're offering down there. A lot of programming, we do, we do programming every day. There's, there's something going on um, every day. So um, whether it's, you know, watching an old movie or, you know, uh, Makerspace, you know, there's, there's something for them. So if they wanna get involved in a, in an activity, you know, a librarian activity, it's there for them. If they just wanna play games in the alcove, that's fine. If they just wanna hang out. If they just want to hang out and sit at a table and chat with their friends, it's a safe place where they can do that. Is it a traditional idea of library usage? You know, the numbers on materials going out is not, you know, it's not what you would traditionally think of. But it's, again, it's challenging the idea of people's ideas of of what a library is. And if we look at it as a community hub, certainly is.
Yep.
Certainly is.
Well, Debbie said there's many, there's like twenty eight, twenty nine kids down there.
Yep.
I've been there.
I'm always excited to see them down there too. I've been there in the afternoon. Also, I'm it's great to see them working in the conference rooms, like as you can see, like small groups working in some of those those rooms, the study rooms and stuff.
Yep. The bus stops outside and they come in.
That is cool. Do you think they'll use the the checkers and stuff this summer or the spring?
Good question.
We have the, we have the chess pieces now.
Good.
So I I think there was a holdup on they never kind of materialized, but we haven't. We haven't. So that will be encouraged. I'd love to get a chess program going.
That'd be great.
So, yeah.
That'd be terrific. Or a chess club or something that meets.
Is Sarah going to do the garden outside too?
Yes, I think we're going to have to step back a little bit on that. I mean, there's only three of them who work there, so it's pretty tight. And it's hard be, it's hard if you have one person literally out of the building. And so that has to be more program oriented, I believe. But I know she had good response from volunteers who wanted to work on that last year, so I think she will again. It looks, I mean, it looks great.
Yeah.
Driving by and I'm seeing sunflowers, you know, it's like, yeah, this is.
Yeah, I agree. It looked great last year. I hope I hope it looks the same this year too.
I would love to see that.
And I would say if there if there's challenges with getting people and support, she should be looking for volunteers. Or, you know, come to us and we can try to see.
Sure, come on down. I hear you're going to be looking for some things to do.
Thank you.
Of course. So and the last part on that was was the was the programming. So again, people are really responding to the programming that we offer. So whether it's the activities that are that are around, like the egg hunt, all the the children's room activities, which I'll talk about in a moment. Belly dancing, I think I mentioned cribbage has taken off. We're having a cribbage tournament at the library.
That's great.
Next week, which Mary and I just, we discovered that we both like playing cribbage and I know Erin does as well. So we started offering it and people, originally we were offering it in the evenings as, you know, you think, okay, library programs. And we weren't getting a good response. And then we said, well, what the heck, let's just do it on a Friday, one to two thirty. Nobody can come then. You know what? There are, there are people who are looking to play cribbage on a Friday afternoon. And so depending on the weather, we're getting, you know, one, a couple times we got like fifteen people coming.
Oh, cool.
Which is which is a great response. So can't, just can't stop there. So we decided we'd have a tournament. So we are doing outreach with five other libraries in the area.
Oh, that's great.
And so we sent out the word to all the directors at the other libraries as well as reaching out to some of the councils on aging in different towns. So I won't remember everybody I'm sure. So it's us and Milbury and Sutton, Hope Dale. And a few others. So we we did a a call, we sent out a brochure. And we're going to do the first one with the idea that other libraries will take it on for the others. So we're going to do like every other month, offering a a Blackstone Valley cribbage.
That's great.
So it's nice to see people responding. So I mean, that's all you can do in a library. You you think of something crazy, it's like, well, that will never work. And you give it a try and sometimes it does. So it's nice to see. Staffing, wonderful to say that our staff, we are completely staffed. We also had a staff development day, April tenth. And we had somebody come, it was actually the CEO from the company Go To Blue, which provide our emergency alert system, which was really informative, which was a great, a great time. Because they could walk us through. At 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 all of our desks, we have emergency buttons to push if if we are, if we feel the need. But Kim and I were talking and realized that we didn't, we didn't know what happened to that since we're relatively new and and talking to some of the staff, a lot of them didn't know either. And so I thought that's that's no, that's no good. There's no point in having an emergency alert system if you have no idea what's going to happen when you push that button. So so the person from the company came and told us exactly what happens when you push those buttons. As well as two officers from the Grafton Public Grafton Police, who were wonderful to come and and tell us, okay, when you push those buttons, the CEO could tell us what the button does, but they could tell us what the what the dispatch is doing. So and give us some suggestions about, you know, safe spaces and where to go to and so. There's further talks for them to come back at a later date to do more comprehensive talk about like for non person with a weapon incidents, you know, just you need to get out of the building, where should everybody congregate? Some safety issues. Because I I want to make sure that we're all on the same page and we know how to get everybody out of the building. So that was very positive. So great staff development day, I felt with that. And then the children's room update. Past week, we had vacation week, which was wonderful. And so partly by the generosity of the trustees, wanting to finally get around to having a celebration for the children's room being open. We thought that this was a good time. So the children's room did a lot of work in planning this and had some great activities and they were really, really well attended and and responded to. So that was, that was great to see. It was, it was a good, good place for people to come on during the break, during the school break. So so very positive there. And it doesn't stop there because we also have scheduled to coincide with Jerome Willock's birthday, a concert. So Mr. Kim is coming out of retirement again.
He said he would do it for the library.
We have it all, you know, how can, you know, can't turn on the library, can you? So so we're going to have a concert on the green. It's going to be a sort of a day of activities. So it's going to start off in the morning with bouncy, lots of things, inflatable, bouncy houses and such for people to enjoy. A food truck, people if they want. We're going to be providing like face painting and balloon twisting and all the fun things that you would find at all those.
That's wonderful.
At a certain point, those are going to shut down so that the focus can then turn to the concert. And and we have that scheduled for for that day. We also have a rain day just in case. Scheduled in case, you know, because you never know. But the the Common is already reserved with the town, so we're moving forward with that.
Fantastic.
Sounds like a pretty big event, a great event. So make sure you get enough help.
Right. And and so my next point about that would be it is going to be a big event and we're going to get great response. And so the plan is to have the 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 regular permanent staff at the event primarily. And, you know, have some of the part timers and temps covering the room because I don't think the room is going to get quite as much use. But but it would be a great time to see trustees. So I.
I put it in my calendar.
Good, good. So I will formally invite all of you and encourage you and guilt you if you don't.
What time is it again?
So starting in the morning, I believe we're starting at nine.
Yeah, you you have, you say it's so nine, June twenty first, nine AM on the Common.
Yep, there you go.
And then until twelve thirty and then Mr. Kim at one and then the library closes at two. So, yeah, so.
There you go.
That's not, is that Memorial Weekend?
No, 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 this is, this is not until June twenty first.
Oh, June twenty.
Memorial is the
Oh, great. Okay, good.
The Monday, the twenty sixth, I think.
Great.
Memorial is is May, this is June, so.
Right.
We're good.
I'll look at the, I'll reread that. That's good. We should tell that. Do you want more people to come? Should we tell the Grafton news about it?
Sure, of course. Celebrate the children's room? Yeah, you bet.
Yeah, and and the E boards. Do you, do you know about, like Dana knows all about getting in on the E boards.
Yeah, I could help with that. I'll, I'll ask the, who who's, who would be, do you want to talk to somebody from the Grafton news and maybe a lib, one of the?
I would say Sarah Vanister would be the best contact because she's.
Who?
Sarah Vanister.
Okay, great. Okay. I'll, I'll send them a note. I'll do it tonight.
Great, wonderful, wonderful. And the other, the only other element was the egg hunt, which we already discussed.
And I thank you again. It was, it turned out to be really fun.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a little panicky in the morning.
Yeah, I just loved all the photos of, because we got a lot of great photos from the the Boy Scout troop one oh six. And they're all wearing, you know, the the bunny ears. It's cold and wet, right? And you just kind of have these, you know, like it's stark contrast between, you know, the the happy bunny. Grumpy bunnies. You know, the teenagers. Yeah, so they had fun though. It was a good event.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Tom, for the update. I have a question for you. I saw something in the news about IMLS funding. Do you have any, I don't know, anything you can update the board with that? Because I know it partially funds our library of course.
Actually, last time I, at the last meeting, I did talk about this, right?
What was it?
IMLS funding?
I don't remember.
The Institute of Museum and Library Sciences
Right.
is one of the ones that you hear got cut by by the recent stuff.
Yeah, so in effect, the current administration is looking to eliminate IMLS institute.
Museum and library services, yes.
Which can't be done because it was, it's it's a Congress is the only one who can actually eliminate it.
Appropriate.
Right. But it can be defunded considerably and that's what's happening.
It's Museum of Library and.
Institute of Museum and Library Services. IMLS.
Yep. And so in March, March fourteenth, it was, it was cut drastically. So funding for it through twenty five is actually already been voted on and approved. So there are somewhat sufficient funds currently. But the funding is going to be eliminated considerably. So the federal funding is 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 going to be.
How does that affect us?
So it affects us indirectly. It doesn't affect us directly. And how it will affect us indirectly is through MBLC. Because they get a lot of funding from there. And they have, they have staff members who are funded fully through this. So they're going to be hurting. They are making some difficult choices. They have decided to cut back certain programs that they have already. But there are other ones that they are desperately trying to move forward with. So eBooks and audiobooks that are supplied by them, now that's not all of ours, but a good portion of them are supplied from them. Grants that are are going, go through them are cut back considerably.
Like, so like the building.
The building grants?
I, doesn't seem that anything that we have, if if you were applying for a grant now, I'd be concerned. For what we have, we seem okay.
So we're very fortunate.
Yeah, yeah, you did it at the right, right time.
Do you know if there's any information about, I don't know, writing to your congressman?
Yes, there is. And I can provide that. Yeah, I'll be happy to send that around to you because MBLC has provided some some information. There have been some lawsuits that have already been brought against by the different, different states. And.
I thought that was state. I didn't realize that was federal.
So.
Well, the federal contributes to the MBLC.
Right.
I didn't realize.
So it said that, I mean, there's an article, IMLS is relatively small federal agency with around seventy employees, but they're going to eliminate it. So, you know.
I I think the number I saw was that it's about, it's about four million dollars.
That's what I see, four million dollars to MBLC.
Three point nine million dollars.
Okay.
It's not a large part of the United States budget, but it's a large part of what libraries use.
Well, it's, that's, the four million is the Massachusetts piece.
Is that the four million?
Oh, was it? Okay.
That's what I see here.
Four million that's given to that, okay.
Maybe it was three point nine percent of the overall, I can't remember now.
Wow.
But so, so as I say, so indirectly, we are going to feel it. But I don't see it, I don't see it affecting us in in our services or as much in our in our resources. I did notice that Shrewsbury put a banner up at the top of their website with a link to it. So I would love to be able to do that if if you guys would feel comfortable with that. Basically, just, you know.
I think if it's just, if it's just information, like, you know, we got our funding from this program.
We're not telling them, yeah, just, yeah, just say this is how you can contact and you can, they can decide what to say.
Great, good, good.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions for Tom on his director's report?
I'm glad we didn't have to bree breeze through it today. We actually had some time.
Yeah, that was really nice.
Information, so that was great.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I think that brings us to the end of the agenda. So just a couple next meetings, friends, the next friends meeting is May thirteenth at seven thirty and that's a Zoom meeting. Erin already mentioned the next policy subcommittee is May seventh at the library. And then our next meeting is May twenty eighth. That's not a, that's not like the holiday weekend.
No, it's, no, it's the, oh, wait, wait, the twenty, yeah.
It's not, the holiday weekend is the weekend before.
Yeah. Yep, okay.
Yep.
So unless, if anyone has any issues with that date, let us know as soon as possible, but otherwise, May twenty eighth is our next meeting.
Did you have any public input?
Oh, thank you. I missed over that. And we do have some public here. Any public input? Yeah, okay. Thank you, Erin, for reminding me.
I just had a quick question. When you were talking about the strategic plan, do you need to keep the strategic plan to maintain the grant that we already have? Do you have to have one in place, the building grant, do you know?
I don't, I don't believe so. I believe that that strategic plan went through twenty twenty four. So we don't, right, and we were kind of allowed to delay our next strategic plan because of the building committee and because of COVID and stuff like that.
I I just wanted to make sure that by not having a strategic plan, it doesn't
Right.
impact the the funding. So.
I can, I can certainly double check and follow up with you.
We were definitely working on it. We were going to do one.
Yeah.
Because we've already received all our funding for that. You mean future funding?
No, 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 for the the building that we already did.
Well, haven't we received, we received all our money.
Did you receive?
Oh, yeah, we've received all the payment.
Oh.
Yeah, we got all our money.
Okay, I didn't realize all of it was.
I don't think it has any impact on the current.
Okay, then that makes sense if we already have the money.
We need to do it.
Okay.
And they know, they, we must have been in contact with them and got it. I think we got extensions, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Yeah. No, we, it was incredible how fast we got all our money. It happened in the very beginning. We had like, what was like four hundred and sixty thousand and we had to find it. It went through a wire transfer.
Yeah, yeah, that first payment.
And we had to find it. We finally found where it came through. Yeah, it was because we were marching ahead. We did things the right way anyway.
But I will double, I'll confirm that.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Declare the motion carried.